Hey everyone, this is CJ with Carson Rural Communities. And I have Commissioner John Cassinelli here with us to give us an update on so much stuff right now, right?
Yes, yes. Glad to be here, thank you.
I'm so glad you were able to come. You know, sometimes when we do our live segments, the 30 minutes, that's it, 30 minutes, and it's in and out, and the same time we're doing our Carson Rural Communities on the radio, well, you're out in Yarrington or someplace else doing a commissioners meeting. So I asked him to come on over and talk to us and let us know the things that are going on. And so by the way, we are on 95.1 FM, that's KNVC.org, and we do the segment called Carson Rural Communities. And so thank you again for coming to chat with us and tell us all these fun things that are going on.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, we're just gonna get right down to the nitty-gritty, is that cool?
Absolutely.
Okay, so one of the things that we're going to talk about for Lyon County is the Water Resource Survey.
Yeah, so if you go on to the Lyon County website, lion-county.org, you'll find a link to a Survey Monkey that they are conducting a water resource survey. And it's a short questionnaire, it will be available online through November, I think it's November 24th. So we encourage people to take a look at that and fill it out, and it'll help guide the water resources in the future.
And so what are some of the questions that you can expect to see?
Well, I guess I should have taken a look at it myself, but...
It's okay, it's all good.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's on there yet, I haven't done it myself yet, but I know I want to encourage everybody, and I'm gonna go on and do it myself. But yeah, it's on there until later in the month, so I've gotta get my own chance to get on there and fill it out as well.
Okay, well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but that's okay. For Lyon County, that's going to include Dayton area, Yarrington, Stagecoach, Silver Springs, and all the other little areas as well, right?
Countywide, yes.
Countywide, so make sure you go over to that Survey Monkey through lion-county.org to do that little questionnaire.
Yes.
So it's what, about 20 questions?
Yeah, it's just a one-page questionnaire.
A one-pager, that's good.
But like I said, I haven't filled it out myself, but I intend to, so I'm not sure what those questions are just yet, but...
That's all right. And what was that deadline again?
I believe it's November 24th, it's up until, yeah.
All right, so let's just move along and talk a little bit about the flood preparedness program that's coming up.
Yeah, so we just, commissioners declared it Flood Preparedness, Flood Awareness Week. We are holding a flood preparedness workshop on November 13th at the Dayton Community Center, and I believe that is 5:30 to 7:00.
Okay.
On the 13th.
In the community center, that's on Pike Street, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, for anyone who's new to the area, that's where you would wanna go and find out more information about flood preparedness.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna give out a lot of information, and it'll be kind of a Q&amp;A opportunity as well, so.
All right, and so I'm gonna mark off things, because I'm telling you, look, four pages of stuff. So I'm gonna mark this one off, and I'm gonna mark this one off, because this is all for your benefit.
Yes.
So let's see, you are having some permit challenges, aren't you?
Yes, throughout the county, we've had some challenges. I get calls quite often that sometimes it can take several months to get a permit right now, but our community development director has assured us the staff is working on that issue. They've got an additional person in now doing plan checking.
Okay.
And we expect to see some catching up and some good results by the end of the year, so.
Well, that's good, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna cross that one off, and this one off, and let's see, let's talk about the Assembly District 39.
So this week, we had a kind of a unique situation where we had a joint meeting between the Lyon County Commission and the Douglas County Commission, and we voted to appoint Mr. Blaine Osborne to the vacated Assembly District 39 seat, which Ken Gray had stepped down to take position in Washington DC with the Veterans Affairs Department as a cemetery, in the cemetery division. So Blaine Osborne will be the Assemblyman for District 39 in the event that the Governor calls the special session that we keep hearing rumors about.
Oh goodness.
But he will have to, there will be an election eventually for the next election cycle.
But this one is an appointment?
For the remainder of Mr. Gray's term.
Okay.
So we're expecting to see a special session, although the Governor has not yet told us when that would be or what the agenda will be, but we have, in anticipation of that, we've appointed Mr. Osborne as the District 39 Assemblyman.
So then how did the commissioners select Mr. Osborne?
So we actually, we don't do that, the legislature minority leader, Greg Hafen, came up with the nomination, and there can be a number of people nominated, but we only received the one nomination, so.
Okay.
Our commission voted in approval, the Douglas Commission voted in approval, and then the joint commission got together and voted it in, so.
Cool, and what's Mr. Osborne's area of expertise, I would ask?
He has worked in many of the legislative sessions in the past, and he's got a really good knowledge of the inner workings of the legislature, so.
And we need that.
Yeah, so he's very familiar with the, with the whole process, and seemed like it was a good pick to me, so.
Cool, well, there you go. So when does his position start?
He's been sworn in as of Thursday.
There you go, so, cool. Congratulations to Mr. Osborne.
Yeah.
All righty, so let's see, now you and I talked before we started our little video segment here, and we talked about daycare and the upcoming early learning center.
Yes.
And so I had put in there, there's the daycare at the corner of Main Street and 50, and then you also told me about the early learning center through the Boys and Girls Club, so let's talk a little bit about that.
Sure, so obviously Dayton, we have some challenges when it comes to available daycare facilities, and there's one right there on the corner of Highway 50 and Main Street that has been trying to get open. They were having some struggles with ADA requirements and, you know, state requirements, as well as some county.
Right, so that's all the way up to federal requirements, as well as our whole county ordinances and things like that.
Yeah, so it's my understanding those challenges have been met, and they should be opening pretty soon.
Oh, cool.
And then we've just broke ground in the last week on the Boys and Girls Club's new early learning center, which will be right next to their existing facility on the corner of Riverboat Road and Highway 50, so.
Riverboat Road and Highway 50.
Yeah, across from the Maverick.
Okay, so that's, that's also still zoned commercial?
Yes, and a lot of people have been asking about, they see the equipment working right now, across from the Maverick, and that's what's going on there, the early, early learning center for...
So it's not a Maverick car wash?
No.
We can dispel that one.
Yes, it's an early learning center for the Boys and Girls Club of Mason Valley.
Oh great, and so what's the ETA on getting in, the doors open, I would say?
I believe they're looking at late 2026, early 2027 for that, yeah.
Cool, and so the floor plans have been done?
All of that is completed.
Oh, that is really good.
Yep.
So you see me doing this, because I'm partially blind now, and so it's really hard for me to see things, so everything has to be in color for me, so that's why we do it over there. And so now, we are going to talk about the upcoming groundbreaking for the new building, and I'm going to let you announce it.
Yeah, so we do have next week, on the 13th, the groundbreaking for the new Charles Kirk government complex in Dayton, that is going to house the new district court, as well as the Lyon County Sheriff's Holding Facility, it's got a Sallyport, it's gonna have Health and Human Services offices, and it is, what's exciting for me is it has a commissioner chamber in case there is something on this side of the county that we may want to hold a meeting occasionally to allow folks to attend that easier, we'll be able to have meetings at that facility as well.
That is really good. Now, what's the ETA on this building complex to be completed?
Same thing, we're probably looking at a little over a year for, for construction on that. It's a, it's a pretty complex, you know, I think it's a $30 million project, so it's, it's a pretty complex building, you know, with the court, court facilities and jail facilities, holding cells, things like that, it's, there's quite a bit that goes into it, so it'll be probably a year, year and a half construction.
Yeah, it's kinda nice that you're going to also have those commissioners buildings to have meetings there too, because no one really wants to drive to Yarrington, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And if you, at least once or a month or so, if you could drive to Dayton, wouldn't it be a lot easier for the, for the commissioners?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've discussed if there was an issue that was Dayton-centric, that, you know, we expected a lot of, you know, people in that area.
Sure.
Then we would hold meetings there, I wouldn't expect them to be held there permanently, but from time to time, as, as appropriate, then that's, that's the plan.
Okay, all right, well, let's see, I didn't put this in any order, so we're just going to hop, skip, and jump, is, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
All right, I would like to talk about the Railroad Depot.
Yes, so we did get the final bids on the reconstruction of the Railroad Depot, as you know, in Dayton there, it was a victim of arson, it's, it's kind of a centerpiece for the historic downtown Dayton, and it's kind of a unique project because of the reconstruction wanting to be historically accurate, and it's a post and beam, so there's not a lot of contractors that specialize in that type of work. So they've settled with the insurance company, they've gotten, gotten that ironed out, they've received the bids, the design work is completed, and we would expect to see construction beginning on that very soon as well, although I don't have a date yet, but I'm anticipating that will, that will start pretty soon.
It's coming.
And it's not a real big building, you know, there was a lot of people that were grumbling about the county putting money into a facility that is gonna be, you know, no power, no, no restrooms or no electrical service, because it is planned to be historically accurate, but you gotta remember that building's only like 60 feet long and 20 feet wide, it's not very big, and it doesn't meet the requirements of needing fire sprinklers and things like that, so, but it's gonna be more of just a warehouse like it was originally.
A big house, yes.
And eventually they'll, they'll be able to conduct tours and maybe have a, sort of a museum, and it would be open during special events. And once it's rebuilt, the grounds around the depot may be further developed to have kiosks and maybe even restroom facilities and things like that, but I envisaged it as kind of a starting point for self-guided tours of the historic downtown Dayton area, and eventually the Sutro Tunnel and everything, so, so looking forward to that project getting going. There's not a whole lot of other news on development around Dayton, the Silverhorn residential development, they, they were granted a two-year extension, that's the little housing development kind of behind the Dollar General area, so that one's kinda on hold, they got a two-year extension. The Lucas Homes came in and got an extension on the Traditions Casino Special Use Permit, which was originally issued in 2008, and that, they weren't ready to start that, so they've got, the county's changed from Title 10 to Title 15, it's complicated, but they don't allow special use extensions any longer, so they, they were granted this special use permit extension, but they have to apply for the building permit by 2030, or the special use permit will, will then expire.
That's like a five and a half years, right there?
So they got a little bit of time, so we may see that casino, we may not, who knows? What else? We're, we're still seeing some challenges, obviously, with the sewer capacity issue, but NDEP did sign off on the final map for the Woodbridge Development, so we're seeing that, that project has begun, that's the one right there next to Six Mile Canyon Road, and you're seeing the streets and things are being graded and started right now, so...
So when you say Six, Six Mile Canyon, are you talking about if you're coming from Carson City and you're driving down Highway 50, you see Six Mile Canyon on the left?
Yeah, this is on the right side, that section.
So that would be like Churchill area?
Four Churchill Road, Six Mile, yeah, that intersection, you see the construction going on there.
Okay.
That is the Woodbridge Development, which is kinda, as you're heading down towards the school, you'll see it there.
Got it, okay.
So that was approved, NDEP, that signed off on the final map for the capacity for, the sewer capacity for that, and it's, it's in progress. I had an opportunity, it was real interesting, I went out on about three or four hours with our interim utilities director, Sean Sinclair, and took a tour of the Rolling A Sewer Treatment Plant, the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basins, as well as some of our lift stations, and the, the south plant, and a lot of the critical infrastructure around the Dayton area. It was really enlightening and interesting to me, because we talk about all these things all the time, but I wanted to actually lay eyes on it, so we went all through the sewer treatment facilities and all of that, and we have some first-class facilities as well as staff, and I've got every bit of faith in them, and I think we're gonna get through this capacity issue. There are some solutions that we're discussing, nothing final yet, we're still waiting for some data to get through that, but like out at the golf course, I think one of the, one of the solutions, short-term, is we're having them lower the level of the lakes right now, so there's additional capacity available through the winter months is, is when we need the, you know, that's when we run into the capacity issue, is during the winter months, getting rid of that treated effluent water, so, so that's gonna help us. And not, not a whole lot else going on with development right now, everything's kind of moving along slowly.
Yes, and Tradition subdivision, the residential side, now the developer had passed away.
Yes.
And, and so do we have a new developer to continue on with the residential?
Not yet, there are still 60-something homes, I think that they're moving forward with.
Okay.
I, I don't know if it's DR Horton or Lennar, they, I think both companies have some homes that they're moving forward with.
Okay.
But nothing going on on the commercial side, so, other than the, the new government complex.
Okay.
So that's, that's moving along slow, but we're hopeful that we've prioritized with our permit issues, we have prioritized commercial development, so there's a couple potential, not in the Traditions Development, but there's some other potential commercial stuff coming our way that would be nice, and, and they're looking at it, so.
So you really probably don't have an ETA for the commercial retail that's coming in?
Nobody's leased or bought anything there yet, so, yeah.
I can understand that.
Yeah, we're hoping, but I mean, there, there's no commercial tenant that has leased or purchased any pads within that area yet.
And the thing about that that I think about is, you know, you want an acre store of some sort, but the average business is not going to be your acre store, they're gonna be small, small businesses that, that come in.
Yeah.
Am I right in believing that?
Well, typically, yeah, you know, we'd like to see, I know everyone talks about Walmart rumors and things like that, and that just isn't the case, but that's kinda what we would need to get in there, is, you know, another grocery or, or a large retailer or box store of some sort would be, would be fantastic to see there, so.
Yes, so when you're thinking about this new mom-and-pop business coming in, or even the franchise companies coming in to a retail commercial spot, what do you want to see come there? You know, who are you going to entice to, to come here to, to do business in our area?
Yeah.
Yes.
There are some commercial speculative buildings that have been put up, or they're still in progress, but close to completion on Enterprise, but those are speculative as well, so.
Sure.
They, they're, I don't know of any tenants that have signed for those yet either, but they are under construction currently, so.
And so after you see this pre-recorded video, if you have some questions and you can't find the answers, you can always send me a text to 775-400-1151, I'll find the answers for you and hook you up to the person that you need to talk with, and the person we're gonna talk to and start out with will be Mr. John here, so, yes, but at least I can find some information for, for you as well, so.
Sure.
So I'm looking forward to the new commercial space, some people aren't, some people still prefer their rural communities, and that's okay, but, you know, sometimes I wanna go out and buy underwear.
Yeah, and the, and the commercial development really is critical to our community staying alive, I mean, we, we really desperately need that increased tax income, so really like to see some commercial development going on.
That would be awesome.
Yep.
That's awesome. So we are going to move along to critical infrastructure.
Yeah, and that's kinda what I was talking about with the sewer, we, we do have the challenges with the rapid infiltration basins capacity, but we're working on that, I think we've got some, some really viable solutions identified, but we're waiting for that additional data from the engineer, they've had some monitoring wells set up, they expected to begin, finish, finish the, the data in October and begin collecting that data and analyzing it, so we're expecting to see something coming forward on some, on some permanent solutions for that. So the Rolling A Treatment Plant is under almost constant reconstruction or expansion, and I got to take a look at that, as, as more homes come in, that's gonna continue to be expanded, but it's the getting rid of the reclaimed water out of that plant, out of that treatment plant that's been the real challenge, and like I say, we're working on some, and one of the things that a lot of people talk about are the, the data centers, and we know we're being looked at from a lot of data center speculation, and one of the, one of the challenges with those is the water that they consume for cooling, and what we're being told now is they've got, they know that they use a lot of water, it's an evaporative-type cooling system, but they're moving now to a closed-loop system, which uses substantially less water.
Okay.
And we're talking with some of them about utilizing reclaimed water, so it's kind of a win-win, we'll be able to get rid of this reclaimed water that we have abundance of, that we can't get rid of fast enough, they're gonna be able to utilize that, we just gotta get it to them. So once those data centers come in, that's something that we're gonna be looking at as if we can service them with reclaimed water versus domestic or potable water, so...
So do you have an ETA on that, or is that still something that's in the works?
Those are things that are kinda ongoing, Microsoft owns a big piece out by Silver Springs, that they've come in slowly and done some changes with zoning and different things like that, that's kinda teeing it up to be able to get there, but nothing, nothing yet.
Nothing definitive for that.
We have another, in fact, we just, we just looked at this one again this, this past week, the Northern Nevada Industrial Center is a quite large industrial center, again out near Silver Springs, they wanna move forward, but they're having issues with their power infrastructure. NV Energy says they, they won't have the available, I think it's 500 megawatt, whatever, until 2030, which is very concerning, because the sooner the better that we can get these things in for, for the tax revenues. So they're exploring the formation of a general improvement district, a GID, which would build their own power facility. The tricky thing is the county will have to own and maintain the GID, so.
Okay.
So we don't necessarily want to get into the, the power generation business, but it may be the only way to expedite the, the industrial park, so, so we're, we're looking at all of those, you know, intricacies and setting that up and managing it, and what will be involved with that. Of course, we would rather be on the grid power with NV Energy, but if they're not able to meet that.
Okay.
You know, until 2030, we'd like to see that development occur before that, so it might be something that happens. So we'll just, we'll just have to see where that goes, the county staff is, is putting that all together on what, what would be involved with the GID, and they're working very closely with the representatives of the Northern Nevada Industrial Park, or Industrial Center.
Okay.
They're putting that all together.
Okay.
So that continues to move along.
So I just think about the growth, and, and, you know, lots of people are moving in, not just from California, from Texas and other states as well, and we've talked about the Traditions subdivision, and we know that new commercial slash retail's coming in, and I always tell people, well, a lot can't come in until you have the headcount, because you need some of that, that tax money as well, and, and so, I mean, planning, there's so much going on right now, folks, really, a lot is going on, and I'm surprised, because I kinda felt like for the last three years that maybe that area of Dayton and Stagecoach was kinda like being really slow, but it really isn't, it really isn't, because we're gonna talk about something else.
Yeah, I, I kinda disagree, I've, I've lived in, I'm fifth generation here, and I've lived in Dayton well over, you know, almost 40 years now, and I, obviously there's growth.
Yes.
But nearly 70% of our growth occurred before 2008.
Yes.
And the growth we're seeing right now, a lot of the most, if not all of the housing developments that we're seeing were approved prior to 2008, so including Traditions and the one out near the golf course that, that we're seeing coming along. So including traditions um and the one out near the golf course that uh, that we're seeing coming along. So a lot of that was development that was already approved and then they just continued to, you know, um uh postpone it until the market came around. Right now, we're only approving, we're seeing an average of about two hundred building permits annually, and that's countywide. So it's not a whole lot. Um, and it's certainly not uh unsustainable uh if we can get some of that critical infrastructure. But the developers have been really good about coming to the table and, and working with us on expanding that as we go along. So.
Okay. Maybe I just felt that a lot of stuff was being put on hold.
There is some stuff on hold. Obviously, the, the um, uh, the housing in uh Mr. Lucas uh a lot of that is, is up for sale again now, including this section. It's uh silver or Sage Vista, which was next to the Copper Canyon. That was coming forward. And it's all for sale now. So that one is definitely on hold.
Okay.
Much of traditions is, is kind of on hold. I wouldn't say it's on hold. It's just slowed, but a lot of that is the market too. I mean, there's not, there's not a whole lot going on in the uh market until some of those costs come down, you know, um, interest rates and things got to come down. But as far as the commercial stuff, nobody was looking at it, you know, that we know of uh anyway. So I'd like to see a big store come in there and, and I'm sure someday we will, but we just don't have a timeline on it yet.
Right.
So, but um uh, we do have, uh, I know one thing that people be excited about. The traditions uh uh Parkway, the light, the traffic light is uh underway. The construction of the traffic light is underway right now. It should be completed by the end of the year. And then early spring twenty twenty six, uh N D O T, their twenty twenty six um highway fifty payment rehabilitation project includes the traffic signals at Riverboat and at Six Mile. So those will be part of that project. So by the end of next year, we're, we're going to have three signal lights right there in Dayton. Um, unfortunately, some people uh won't like that, but most people I think will. Uh, one thing that that's gonna, gonna uh in, in, in addition to that, it's going to change that speed limit from forty, uh, from sixty miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour. So people will need to be aware of that um as they go through that. And that's, that's one of the reasons that sometimes those traffic signals aren't popular because it, it's going to slow that.
Slow people down.
Commute going, going into Carson City and back again. It's, they're going to have traffic signals and and a, and a lower speed limit. So just be aware of that. So.
How far out does that go from Smiths to uh, to uh, I guess, Stagecoach area?
Yeah, so the project is going to start at Fortune Drive, which is right there where
Okay.
Uh, the grocery outlet signal, current signal is, and it's going to go out to um, I think out to Bryce, I believe, which is.
Okay, Bryce, yes.
Yeah, so they're gonna, uh, uh, if you're familiar with that stretch of highway fifty, um, the slow lane is very, very rough. Once you go through that intersection now, it's uh, you know, you almost have to move over, especially if you're towing a trailer. It's just the pavement is just beat up. So that's all going to be fixed and the traffic lights are going to go in. So. Uh, and I believe there'll be some additional turn lanes. Uh, I know I've heard people talk about um, the Sagali, which Sagali intersects with Traditions Parkway on the other side. I believe there will be turn lanes and, and all of that will be going in as part of this project too. And we've urged N D O T to look at the drainage infrastructure. Uh, because we've had some issues with some flooding recently.
Yes.
Um, particularly over there by Copper Canyon and, and um Rainbow Road. And we get that alluvial flooding comes down there. Um, but there's kind of a choke point where uh N D O T's culverts where that go under highway fifty are a bit undersized and um, we're hoping that they will upsize those as part of this project, but I, I don't have any confirmation on that, but we're certainly hoping that, that they do that.
Well, when you say that they're, they're um undersized, what exactly does that mean?
Uh, so we've done, county's done some studies on the, on the, the flooding and um, engineers looked at all the alluvial flooding that comes down and they've identified culverts and um, you know, anywhere there's uh ditches or, or undersized infrastructure to carry the, the stormwater away. And part of that was the N D O T culverts uh, under highway fifty. Some of those are too small or undersized to, to carry um, you know, the hundred-year flood uh type storms. So we'd like to see those uh, uh beefed up a little bit. Um, and of course, we, we can't um, we can't make N D O T do anything, but we can certainly uh, ask them to, to consider that. So um, that's one thing that, that um I'm hoping will be uh included on this project, but um, but I don't know for sure if they're going to do that. But it makes sense. They're going to have the highway torn up and they're going to be doing all that work on the new pavement that uh maybe we can drop another uh box culvert or something in there at the same time. So.
Okay. All right. So we're going to move along with the truck stop out in Silver Springs, Stagecoach area. And then we'll talk a little bit about Campo. If you've ever listened to some of our live segments, we've had folks from Campo come and talk to us and and John is our contact for Campo if you ever have questions. And then when we're finished talking about Campo, we're going to move into Lion County R T C project. How's that?
Sounds good. So.
Okay, so let's do that truck stop.
Yeah, so the truck stop, we're really excited. It's a really large um actually, a lot of people don't know it, but it's going to be a seven eleven. And uh, seven eleven truck stop is not something we see a lot of on the West Coast.
No.
They've got a lot of them in the Midwest. And I believe this is probably, from what I understand from some of the seven eleven officials is it is uh, we're not expecting to see a lot of them on the West Coast. So it's going to be a unique uh, uh, seven eleven uh, and there's going to be uh eventually a hotel there. Don't know when that is expected. But the uh, the truck stop itself will have a really large uh store, obviously, and gas, diesel pumps, all of that. It's located right at the roundabout where highway fifty and USA Parkway intersect.
Okay.
And they should be opening, I think, uh, in January, but um, right now, they're kind of waiting on encroachment permits with N D O T to get
Okay.
uh, out onto the USA Parkway. So.
And how long does that take to, to get that?
It can take time, but uh, it's been in the works. So I'm, I'm pretty sure they're on track for January opening is what I've been told, but don't hold me to that, but that's, that's what we're being told. So.
Somewhere around January.
It's all paved and um, they've, they've got a lot of the paint up. I don't know a whole lot. I uh, I, I can find out a little bit more on that, maybe get some more information to you on it. But uh, it should be coming real soon after the first of the year.
Okay, very good, very good. So that's going to lead me, you know, recently, there was, for a lack of words from me, the most stupidest accident that happened going from Dayton to Carson City and through Mount House. It's like, what happened? What happened to that road that, that accident happened? That, that was, that was a terrible accident. A lot of people were, were either late for work or turned around and, and went back home because it was hours before anyone was able to uh go and drive on highway fifty in Mount House area again from um, that one accident. We're talking about the one who was a commuter, not the one at the nighttime, but the commuter one. And um I, I have spoken and we've chatted a little bit about Campo, which is the Carson area metropolitan
Planning.
Planning organization. Campos. That's a mouthful. Okay. So it, it's Campo. And uh, John is our contact when we have questions about Campo. And of, of course, you can call Campo, but he knows more about what's going on like almost instantly. Almost, almost. And, and so I wanted you to tell our, our viewers a little bit more about Campo and how it works and why it's there.
Okay, so uh Campo is an M P O or a Metropolitan Planning Organization. And they uh, they help Douglas County, Carson City and Lion County, just the highway fifty corridor out so far in Lion County um, to identify uh critical projects and assist in um finding funding for those projects. So um, and when I first decided to run as a county commissioner, the highway fifty, particularly in Mount House, was one of the reasons I I wanted to do that because uh, I see the, the, the issues uh and over the years, the increased traffic has, has been uh concerned. But you know, driving it during the day, it's a piece of cake.
It is a piece of cake most of the time.
Those high commute hours is when, when you see the problems.
Yeah, I believe that one started at like, the, the accident was like at seven AM.
Yeah.
Right at commuting time.
So six to, you know, six to eight, it's, it's really bad. It's a little uh, not too bad after eight o'clock, but you have a little bit of those, the, the nine to fivers. And then, you know, four o'clock to seven o'clock, it's, is terrible too. So um, but rest of the day, it's not too bad at all. So uh, so what happens is when uh uh, N D O T does their uh, their surveys, you know, they're taking the whole, the whole day into effect and uh, uh, and when they're doing their traffic counts and things like that. So it kind of averages out. But yes, we do have some issues there. Um Campo has been assisting, uh, helping to get uh, that on the radar for uh, hopefully a permanent sol- uh, solution. Uh, but the timeline is not good. Um, they're still telling us it could be, you know, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-eight, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two before we see uh, a lot of real action take place. Uh, but they are working on some plans. Uh, they've done some, some surveys and some outreach and some community meetings. They've uh they've resurrected an old plan that I think was out in uh two thousand and ten that has frontage roads and um, probably a traffic signal at Red Rock, Red Rock and Highlands. Um, and some sort of controlled intersection at the three forty-one Virginia City Highway, which could be a roundabout, it could be a traffic signal. Uh, they even had one uh, plan that was an overpass there. So um, so there's, there's things being looked at and planned. But we don't anticipate seeing any real movement on it for it, it's like, it's in N D O T's uh long-term plan, which could be in some cases, twenty years. So, uh, so yeah, um, in the short term, I'm hoping to see some additional lighting uh at the Highlands intersection.
And of course, folks have kind of said, no, we don't want that lighting there. But you know what? It, it's it's a visibility nightmare.
Yeah, it's very dark. So uh, if you look at the, again, the three forty-one intersection, there are traffic lights, not, not signals, but the lights, you know, um, I think there's like twenty of them or more. Um, you know, on, on each side of the road. Uh, and it's lit up very well and you can see when you come through at night. Um, but when you get over to the Highlands and Red Rock intersection, there's only one light on this side of the V and T Bridge. Uh, and it's, it's quite dark there. And, and of course, we've had many, many, many accidents, including
Many.
fatalities and pedestrian fatalities.
As well as the horses.
Yes. So I'd like to continue to push some, for some short term. Um, and we've discussed uh, the possibility of the, the lighting. We've discussed the possibility of a lighted uh crosswalk uh, which they push the, push the button and the blinking lights and pedestrians can get across. Um, and some others, some other things. They've, they've got little tricks that they use, including uh uh, I don't know what the term is, but they can stripe the highway in a way that makes the driver feel like they need to slow down. It's kind of a, a mind trick. And I don't know how that works, but those are all things that have been discussed. But the bottom line is the speed limit is forty-five miles an hour and the average speed through there is fifty-seven miles an hour.
Oh, I've seen them go faster.
And we all see him going even, you know, eighty miles an hour. So.
Scary.
Uh, so the bottom line is people really need to slow down. Um on uh, one good thing is uh, past Lion County sheriffs have said that's a state route and they don't, they didn't encourage uh, the Lion County uh deputies to um, perform a lot of traffic stops on highway fifty. They were leaving that up to the, the uh highway patrol or state police. However, uh Sheriff Pope, uh Lion County Sheriff Pope has um given instructions for the deputies to um, step it up on highway fifty. So they do quite a few traffic stops on highway fifty now and the data is out there. Um, I think they, they just told us there was like the past year, there's been like two thousand traffic stops just in
Wow.
That area. So uh, so they are actively doing it now and, and um you'll see a little bit more activity going on. Uh, and once in a while, they'll do their saturation patrols up there too. So you'll see.
I've seen that a couple of times.
So uh, it helps, but unfortunately, it's not, you know, it's not going to be um, the, the, the fix-all. Uh, we've got to have uh, we've got to have limited um, limited left turns. We've got to have the high T intersections and merge lanes. And, you know, some, some sort of uh, intersection controls at, at, at those two major intersections. But the main thing is we need, we need to limit the left turns of, right now, it's a free-for-all. People can turn off of uh, any driveway and, and take off across the highway and it's very dangerous.
I have actually seen that.
Yeah.
It's scary also.
Yeah, so the high T model, uh, which you see out by Stagecoach and you see it uh between Fallon and and uh Fernley, um, it's very uh controlled. You only have certain intersections where you can turn left and you have the merge lanes. And, and it gives you an opportunity to get up to speed before you jump out into traffic. So um, that is the preferred um, solution. And, and of course, that will have to, we'll have to have some frontage roads uh, to carry some of the buses and local traffic.
Yes.
Uh, so that's part of the, the permanent plan and I, and we'd like to see that. Um, other Campo news, um we did receive a, uh, the Lion County received a one point three million dollar grant through uh Campo uh, with a sixty-six thousand dollar match for Lion County going towards the uh, the second uh the second bridge.
Second bridge.
Yeah, so uh, so we have started and that, that is going towards the planning, uh, identification of the, of the final location and the planning and all of that good stuff. Um, I doubt it's gonna, I, I think it's going to take probably a year before we get all of that completed.
Okay.
Um, although. Um, although I think an engineer could probably burn through the one point three million pretty fast. Uh, but it is in progress and, and that's a good thing. We've, we've moved the needle forward on, on that, on the, on the East Dayton Bridge. So um, I'm, I'm going to continue. That was another one of the um, one, one of the issues that I ran on, that I campaigned on. I live out there in the ranches and I know it's not a real popular uh, topic with some of my neighbors, but I've been out there over thirty years and I've always known the Dayton Valley Road was the connector road for that area. Um, and we always knew eventually we were going to have that, that uh, second bridge. We just never knew exactly the location. So that's what we're trying to identify. There are some preferred locations. I think they narrowed it down to three, so now we're going to get that narrowed down to uh, to one.
All right, so we're going to pose, I mean, excuse me, pause for about two minutes, but we're going to be right back. I gotta check in with my general manager, okay? So give me just a moment because we didn't have a camera person today, but we'll be right back, okay? Alrighty, now we are back. And so again, we're going to talk a little bit more. I think we were getting ready to move towards the Lyon County RTC project.
Yeah, one, uh, one last thing on Campo before we move on. We are uh, planning a, 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 a planning meeting uh, for Highway fifty. If anyone is interested in that, it's going to be on November eighteenth uh, at the Dayton Library at six PM. So if you're interested in some of that Highway fifty planning, uh, that's a good place to get some information and maybe even give a little bit of your opinion. I'm not sure if they still have the surveys up, uh, but this is going to be a good opportunity for people to, to get some more information on what's being talked about.
And, and if they wanted to talk to you, is there a phone number that they can uh, call to, to chat with you? If they have some ideas or some other additional questions?
I don't know what it is though. I don't know my own phone number.
That's okay.
Let's see. Yeah, I've got a, I've got a county phone, I'll have to find it here. But I'll find that while we're talking.
It's all good, folks, I can get that for you. So I'm sorry about that.
I, I, I have the county phone and I just don't ever, here it is. So it is seven, seven, five, four, six, one, six, two, nine, six.
Okay.
And uh, and if I don't answer it, um, leave me a message or send me a text and I will get right back to you. And I take, I take a lot of calls on that phone. I had a gentleman call me the other day about uh, pigeon poop. So there's all sorts of things out there that, that folks have questions on. So give me a call and if I don't uh, answer right away, I will get right back to you with, with your answers.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the Lyon County RTC project.
Yeah, so we uh, had uh, just kind of finishing up on a, on a major RTC project through uh, what that was, was um, crack sealing, uh, fog sealing and chip sealing throughout Mound House. I think they got almost every county road in Mound House this time and quite a few out in Dayton as well. And so that's finishing up and they did a really good job. The contractor, uh, I think was S and C Construction did a great job. And they had a few rain delays to finish up in Dayton, but I'm pretty sure it's just about done. And the roads, if your road didn't get completed, the roads are on a uh, five-year cycle. So you can pretty much count on if it got chip sealed uh, four years ago, then it's probably due uh, next year, it'll be on the list, so.
So I'm going to put that on my list to talk about gravel roads later on.
Okay.
Say, let's just say a couple of months from now, what do you think?
Sure, yeah.
Alrighty, so now we are going to talk about grants.
Uh-huh. So yeah, one thing that has surprised me as a commissioner uh, is the number of grants that we accept uh, almost at every meeting. And we have a really robust, um, particularly in the Health and Human Services. And Dr. Holmes does a fantastic job of, of finding those grants and, and getting those grants. And it's from things from anywhere from um, you know, a handyman that can come and work on your home if you're in need. And there's just so many grants that we receive that are available. So I encourage people to go on to um, the LiveBetterLyon.org site and find what is available there, but there's tons and tons of things there.
Say that one more time.
It is LiveBetterLyon, L-Y-O-N, dot org.
All right, great.
We, we see a lot of grants come through. Um, we uh, we have received recently a grant for improvements at the Silver Springs Airport. That's going to include uh, pavement sealing and lots of maintenance things there at the, at the airport. The Silver Springs Airport is a county-owned airport. Um, the Dayton Airport is not, it's private. Um, so we, we do, uh, we do maintain that. Um, but yeah, there's a, a, a lot of grants that we see and it just shocks me. It's, a lot of times it's in our consent agenda, so people might, may not go through all of that. But if you, you see the number of grants that we, we get uh, on a monthly basis is, is outstanding.
Well, you know, maybe I would like to discuss that a little bit further if you don't mind. When it comes to grants, anybody can apply for a grant? Is, is that the?
Uh, most of these are grants that are available to municipalities.
Municipalities.
Yeah, there are other, other types. Yeah, there's other types of grants available, obviously for nonprofits and whatnot. But these are grants that are specific to um, like a county or a city. And uh, our, like I say, our Health and Human Services Director applies for these and, and has been um, very, you know, very good at, at, at uh, getting a robust um, uh, acceptance or, or awarding of these grants. And it's just really good to see.
Well, do you think we could have someone who helps with grants come and talk to uh, our viewers about the grants in the area that might be available? Not, not necessarily a governmental grant, but something to help. I'm going to use an example. Uh, let's say there is an elderly individual who lives in, in the area and needs some ramps to, to go up to their, their front door or whatever. Is that something that Lyon County could help with? And I only use that as an example.
Um, yeah, you know, I couldn't speak for sure on that. I, I think there's some nonprofits around though, that, that, that's what they do.
Yep.
Um, uh, nothing comes to mind, but, but I, I'm sure that there are uh, grants available for that type of thing, but it would probably go through one of the, the nonprofit organizations, not necessarily through, through the county.
Okay, okay, we'll do that, all right. That'll be on my uh, agenda later on down the line. So uh, we're almost done, isn't that nice? So, so uh, we also talked about the parks.
Yeah, so there's some, uh, a few exciting things with Dayton Parks. Um, we have some brand-new playground equipment currently going in at the Patriot Park and at the Silver Stage Park. So um, so the kids will have brand-new slides and playground equipment going in right now. Um, and something else that I thought was quite interesting is um, the Parks Department now has two robotic lawn mowers. And one of them is in the uh, the K Winners or our park in Dayton. And the other one is at the Silver City Park. And uh, it's a, it's like a Roomba for your lawn. And so it's, it's about the size of an average push mower, but it uh, it has a little docking station, it recharges every night and it, it drives around, it's GPS uh, controlled and it mows the lawn on a regular, regular basis.
Isn't it cool?
And it does a really nice job and it cuts down on the guy's time from doing, doing other valuable things around uh, uh, the county, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
That is awesome. So let, let's see, we have a park in Silver City. Where else do we have a park?
Oh, well, for this mower, it's the K Winners Park in Dayton. But we've got, we've got parks all around. We've got um, uh, the county recently took over the uh, park at the Santa Maria Ranch. Uh, we've got um, a park at uh, one of the larger uh, regional parks is the uh, park out at Mark Twain. Uh, people are really familiar with that one. And there's actually a, a master plan being implemented or being, being uh, prepared right now for that park. That will have uh, an envision of what that will look like when it's uh, completed. Right now, they've got some baseball fields and some soccer fields there. Uh, but there are, and there's a walking trail. Uh, but that park is uh, going to continue to expand. So they're working on the master plan for that one right now. Uh, and then we've got the Patriot Park is in the uh, the River Park subdivision. Um, there's other parks in uh, Silver Springs, Stagecoach. We've got um, there's one in um, Mound House. So we've got quite a few parks that uh, that the, that the crew's going around and taking care of. So they've got a busy schedule with the shorts, shorthanded staff, but they do a lot with the few guys they have. So good, good group of folks. And then um, you know, the, the cemeteries are part of the uh, the park, county parks too. So we've got the Dayton Cemetery and the Silver City Cemetery here. And so those guys are, they're pretty busy. So anytime they can put these robotic mowers in, it's uh, saving them time to do other things.
Exactly, definitely saves time so you can go, go on to another meeting or whatever. Exactly. Well, it looks like.
One other thing on parks.
Go right ahead.
We've had people saying, hey, you know, I ran into uh, people hunting on the Rolling A uh, property down by the Disc Golf and that is actually a permitted use. So people need to be aware of that, that um, when the county was deeded, the, the property for the Rolling A Park, which includes the, the walking trail and the Disc Golf and all of that, that uh, it was intended for hunting to always be allowed on that property. So uh, this time of year, you're going to see, you know, dove hunters, duck hunters, goose hunters, even turkey hunters. Um, so that is an allowed use there, so just be aware of that if you're down there.
That's good to know. Thank you. So we are almost finished with our very long, what, four-page list of things that we wanted to discuss. And so the last thing that we have is the Governor's Nevada Managed Care Program. What's that about?
Well, so um, we learned about this. I don't know a lot about it, but the governor has uh, formed this uh, Nevada Health Authority. And part of it is Lyon County is going to have a new MCO or Managed Care Organization beginning in uh, January. And one of the things that I've been uh, working on kind of through Campo and um, uh, is trying to get a little more transportation options for uh, our residents. And I've been told that this new MCO is going to uh, have a new transportation component for people that need to get to medical appointments. And we do have a bus right now or the shuttle bus that runs into Carson City for people that need to get to the doctor. But this new MCO is supposed to have uh, more um, options for people. Uh, and it's, I'm assuming it's going to stop at Carstel Hospital Campus and all of the different doctor offices that are up there. Probably the new um, uh, Carson Medical Group Campus. So uh, so we're really looking forward to seeing what is going to come with that. Uh, I don't know a whole lot about it, but we're looking into that. But I'm really excited to see what those uh, additional transportation options are going to be.
So with this Nevada Managed Care Program, it's, it's, it's a health program, right?
Yes.
And what does it entails for it to be a health program? Is it income qualifier?
Work, yeah, yes. Uh, we're kind of uh, looking into that. I don't have all the answers on that, but it's something that's coming down the line, January one, it's going to be available. So I think that information should be coming out online on what we're going to be able to expect.
Okay.
Um, I don't know too much about it, but I know the transportation part of it really piqued my interest because that's one thing that I've been, uh, that was another thing that I wanted to try to um, uh, uh, see through is additional transportation options for our residents in Dayton. Not only seniors trying to get to the doctor, but students that might need to get to Western Nevada College or uh, or even people that are commuters that are trying to get to work. And my, my vision uh, ultimately would be to have a shuttle that's coming from Dayton that can hook up to the, uh, if you're familiar with the Jump Around Carson Bus.
Yes.
The Jack Bus. Uh, they've got a hub downtown Carson at the old uh, the federal building, the old post office. And if we could get a bus from Lyon County to that uh, Jack Hub a couple of times a day, I think that would be fantastic. Because then from that point, people can go on whatever uh, of the, of the Carson, Jump Around Carson bus routes that would, that they would need. They can go shopping up at Topsie or they can get to the hospital or they can get to Western Nevada College and so.
I can use me as an example, okay? So most of my friends know that um, I had a stroke in July and it wasn't your standard stroke where uh, I had to learn how to talk or I had to learn how to walk again, but I lost uh, more than fifty percent of my vision. And um, the doctor said, no, you can't drive. So I couldn't go to any of my specialist appointments. And I have healthcare and my healthcare plan had a plan where they can arrange to have Uber or Lyft to pick you up and bring you to your doctor's appointment, to the medical facility or the hospital for the specialist or whatever the case may be. But they never showed up.
Yeah.
They never showed up. I, I risked the uh, possibility of losing seeing these, these specialists uh, after I had the stroke. And we were relying on this and I'm sorry, but I had to get in the car and drive myself and, and that wasn't what I was supposed to be doing just yet, but I did. And uh, we, we finally found someone who, as long as we arranged several weeks in advance, I had a friend that could bring me to my appointments and bring me back. But you know, this is very strenuous situation for a person who maybe when they had their stroke, they, they can't walk right or, or talk right, then they have to go to physical therapy. Well, you kind of rely on Uber or Lyft or whomever to come. And, and I can tell you, I'm going, I'm going to give you my two cents. It's like, yes, we need it. We definitely need it.
You know, any of us that live out in Dayton and beyond there, it's very, very hard to find an Uber that will come out there. And when you do, it's very expensive and the taxis are expensive as well. So um, you know, it's.
It was sixty dollars one way because I, I did take one Uber, oh, excuse me, one Lyft and it was sixty dollars one way. That, that's just outrageous when you're trying to get to a doctor's appointment.
And we've heard people saying that, you know, they had a medical transport lined up that was going to cost them like a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and, and it's, and, and that, and of course, we do have, the county does have, um, but you have to sign up for that if you, if it's the assisted um, ride, you have to sign up ahead of time.
Yes.
And you're kind of limited on, on the time. So trying to coordinate the available transportation and your doctor appointment and get everybody on at the same time, it's really difficult. And of course, you're dealing with the traffic too and um, And of course, you're dealing with the traffic too and um, so i- it can be real tough. And that's why one of the things that I wanted to do when I ran for office was this transportation. It's had to kind of take a, a backseat because of all the other things that have come up, but it's just something I'm still passionate about. And uh, I have been working a little bit with uh Campo and with um, uh, the Carson, oh, what is it, the um, uh, with the chip, the, the um, uh improvement, uh, I can't remember what the acronym, acronym is, but uh, working with them and with uh RSVPs and.
Right.
With uh, uh Carson City Supervisor Shudy and we're, we're trying to make it work, but I'm hoping to be able to have some sort of option um that would be more uh user-friendly versus.
Yes.
Specific times and specific days of the week that, you know, people will have more options, because it's really hard to uh coordinate with your doctor at times.
Yes.
These doctors, you know, their schedules are uh all over the place, so trying to coordinate the ride with your doctor's availability is the challenge. So wi- with more options, more and more options, um, it's just, it's gonna, gonna be better. I know for me, I made a doctor's appointment back in September and I can't get in until Christmas Eve. And I said, the doctor's working on Christmas Eve? Yes, he is. That's like, well, then what's the?
They do that when it's medical, yes.
Yeah, but look at how long it took to get in, you know, just for my annual and uh, from September all the way to December and a precarious date at that, because it's like, what if he decides he doesn't want to work the rest of the day on Christmas Eve and he's gone, you know, so. But trying to coordinate a ride, if I were in need of a ride to that appointment, that far in advance and on Christmas Eve could be, you know, really difficult, so.
Yes.
So uh, trying to get um more and more uh transportation options for people, really excited to see this MCO roll out and what that will entail, I don't know, but um, they're, they're telling us it's gonna be um, you know, really comprehensive plan and a lot more options for us, so looking forward to that.
I'm looking forward to it too, because you never know, you never know. And, and the thing is, there's really limited transportation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'll take what we can get, so thank you very much.
I, I would love to see, like I say, a shuttle from Dayton at least twice a day, morning and afternoon, get us to the uh Jump Around Carson Hub.
Yes.
And uh, I think it would be fantastic and, and not only for seniors trying to get to medical, but for students trying to get to school, so.
I see it coming.
I think so.
Wave of the future.
Yep.
So let, let's go ahead and give your phone number again so our viewers can uh.
Yeah, so uh, that number again, and I gotta get my cheaters on.
That's okay, you wanna borrow mine?
And um, I could say you can, you can call me and if I don't pick up, leave me a message and I'll get right back with you.
And he does.
Your issue.
Yes.
And um, one last thing I, I wanted to bring up is uh, we have Veterans Day coming up this week and tomorrow, Sunday, uh, is our, I say our, the Dayton Chamber Commerce and the uh Dayton, uh Dayton Valley Golf Club, uh, and myself as the MC, we, we host an annual Veteran Appreciation Dinner and that is at the golf course. I believe it's full this year, but I wanted to send a plug out.
Sure.
We are uh expecting uh Congressman Mark Amade as our keynote speaker and expecting uh Lieutenant Governor Stavros Anthony is our special guest. So uh, it's gonna be a, 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 a pretty neat, uh, pretty neat one this year and we're excited and we like to give back, it's free to veterans. I believe all the tickets are already out and distributed, but um, it's uh, it's uh, it's a great, uh, great event and uh.
Sure.
We do uh.
Tell me the date and the time again.
It's uh November 9th at the golf course, uh, doors open at 4 o'clock.
Okay, so be there.
If we can squeeze you in, we'll get you in if you're a veteran, yes.
Oh, that's great, that's awesome. And, and so I, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for spending the time with me and uh doing this for our viewers and, and just to let you know, I'm a volunteer at KNVC.org, 95.1 FM, and I do a live podcast every Thursday from 12 to 12:30. Well, a lot of people can't come to the radio station between 12 and 12:30, but they can actually listen to our, our radio station. And if you can't hear it on your little car radio, you can actually live stream it at the same time. So you have that, that uh, uh benefit of two, two worlds here, so it's kind of cool. And so again, we're part of Carson Rural Communities Podcast. It is KNVC.org, 95.1 FM. And the music is fantastic. I love it. And, and so I started doing this because I saw that we didn't have enough communication going around about the things that are going on in our community. And then I had to take a little time off because you know what happened to me and um now we're, we're going full force. So if you wanted to come to the radio station and talk about your nonprofit, let me know. My phone number is 775-400-1151 and that's my Google number. And you can text me or, or call me and we would love to talk more about your nonprofit and, and Commissioner John gives us all this wonderful information about what's going on. Or you can choose to spend the three hours every two weeks or three hours more every two weeks or so to, to hear the Lyon County Commissioner meetings, but this is kind of like a recap of what he's done for us and um, it's absolutely wonderful information. And um, I just want to say thank you again for coming over here to uh take your Saturday off to talk with me, because we're here on a Saturday and I wanted to work around his schedule and I can work around any nonprofit's schedule. And so thank you again for, for coming here and, and chatting. It was, it's wonderful information for our community.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you for having me.
I'm excited about the J-A-C.
Yeah, that's, that's been something I've.
Yes.
I'm working on, but slowly, but uh.
It's getting there.
Yeah.
It's getting there, so uh, if you want to give any input to them, give that phone number one more time.
I have to look it up again.
That's okay, you're gonna have it on the board next time.
One of these days I'll memorize that, but uh, you know, I got, I got a new phone when I got into office and I don't call myself, so it's 775-461-6296.
Great, thank you, thank you again. And so remember, if you have a nonprofit and you want us to learn more about what your, your nonprofit does, give me a phone call and we love you and thank you so much for viewing and listening and we hope to see you again. So I'm gonna walk over here, I'm the camera person too, and we're gonna say bye now, so say bye.
Bye now.